All right, it's six o'clock. We'll get started with our Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting on Tuesday, October the 19th. And we'll call the meeting to order and Vice Mayor Jackie said she would do the pledge and Robert, our park, I mean parks, zoning him. Yeah. So if everybody would stand, please.
Oh, right.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your gracious God, we come to you safe and well and thankful for this day that you given us. We thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us and our families. All that are present here tonight, Father, we ask to go forth in this meeting that things discussed here done with wisdom and sermon beneficial to all that are present in Mount Pleasant's residence. We ask your safe travels when we leave this place, carry us home. Lead us, guide us, direct our steps. We give you praise and thanks in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. I love you very much. All right, next we have roll call, please, Van.
Your wife?
Here.
Jackie Granbury?
Here.
Mike Davis, absent. Eric Harvey?
Here.
And Willie Alderson?
Here.
All present, have form.
Thank you. Mike sent Kate a text, I think, or email earlier today and said he was not going to be able to make it, so we expect him to be missing tonight. So anyway, next we have approval and correction of our minutes from our prior meetings, a study session session of September the 16th and the regular meeting of the 21st. And I think Cory even as of this afternoon had some revisions to this study session.
Yes, I did talk, I didn't talk to Mike. He's apparently having some internet and phone problems, but he talked about something that was discussed at the study session, which I think is a good idea to add.
Yeah.
And so I'm going to read a paragraph that I suggest we add to the study session because usually the study session is just discussed, no accentation.
Right.
Nothing like that. But if you remember, there were quite a few speakers from the public.
Yes.
And so I recommend that we add Commissioner Harvey and Davis asked why the beer ordinance was not on the agenda. Ms. Collier stated that she was not comfortable putting the beer ordinance on the agenda while an application is pending. Ms. Collier explained that the city hired outside legal counsel to review the beer ordinance and the pending beer permit application. Ms. Collier said she would forward the commissioners the written legal opinion when it is received. That shows that we had that discussion at the study session.
Probably a very good addition.
You're all okay with that.
Yeah.
I'll give this to Teresa and if you'll approve it with that change.
Yeah. Everybody fine with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think that's important that that's added.
Because there's a history there, Dan.
Yeah. That's exactly right. All right, after you guys have had an opportunity to review, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the amended minutes from the previous meeting.
With the new addition?
Yeah, with the new addition. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a number of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next, number five is award presentations and appointments. And it's our honor tonight as commissioners to honor three of our firefighters for a great job that they've done. Assistant Fire Chief Todd Stewart, firefighter Keith Jennings, and firefighter paramedic Brian Pooley. If the three of you would come forward, please.
If either commissioner could plug them up, what would happen? Picture, man, that'd be great. Gentlemen, I have a page just provided me with the, and each of the members with the beer brief. Guess you'd say right up about what happened and thank you. Maybe you said, you know what? That's one of the big things that I promote every day with fire and places a lot. And you did. So thank you very much. They, I know that they've done a lot of work outside of a certificate of appreciation and certificate of commendation to each of you as well as I know that there was an award given to you, the Star Award through Amicus Rescue Systems, which were going above and beyond. And that's as well deserved. I try to see, every time I see you guys or ladies, I try to say thank you for what you do every day because it's important. And I can tell you, we all appreciate it.
Thank you, absolutely.
So Todd, there's yours. You can eat, there's yours.
There.
And Brian, there's yours. I'm just being sure.
Get the picture.
I want to shake your hand and say thank you. And thank you to the family.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Because we know where the support comes from and it could not happen without your support, so thank you very much.
George, that way. Smiles that way.
Yeah. Take you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Phillip, thank you for what you do every day as well. Steve, thank you.
Mayor, I don't think the other commissioners all got a copy of the narrative.
I'll, I've got my copy right here and I'll be happy to. There's one, and then there's one.
Pass it around.
And we pass it out.
So again, quite a feat. And it's nice to be able to record.
All right, number six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting.
It's not happening.
Wow. All right, next we have a monthly report from Mayor and I'll be brief, but this past weekend, I want to thank all of the commissioners here. I know I saw, I didn't get to run into Eric, but I ran into Vice Mayor Jackie and, and I ran into Ms. Willie and I ran into Eric's wife, looking for him, but he said he was at the bouncy house. I get it. It was Friday, we had to cancel early just simply because of the weather. And I think that was a pretty probably very smart, not realizing what could or could not happen. So Saturday was fantastic. It was elbow to elbow, wasn't it, folks?
Yeah.
And it was that way all day. So I want to thank everybody for all their work on that. We'll keep learning from it every year and do better next years as well. But I mean, really, it took everybody. Al, thank you all for getting the power set up. We couldn't have done it with, I mean, we literally could not have done this without everybody. And thank you very much.
I think it worked well with moving it off of the, off the main street, putting it on the square.
You know, the vendors would like to be back out front and I understand that. Ms. Willie brought up something earlier, you know, that's going to be tore up next year, so what will we be able to do?
I think they also, the food vendors all sold out anyway.
Yeah, that's right. So it was a, it was a great event for our community. Vice Mayor came to the opening of the Mount Pleasant Record Art Gallery on Friday afternoon and that was unbelievable, wasn't it? Huge crowd.
Yeah, we were heading to Summertown.
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody, I get that. I get that. But it was, it was great, the way they honored the children as well. And, and to see those children's artwork was quite phenomenal. Next is Saturday, we got a car show and music on Pleasant Street at the Hunter's Home. Still not sure who's playing, but.
She was on the.
It was on.
The Voice.
It's a woman, yeah. She's the fifteenth, the fifteenth season of The Voice, yeah.
Awesome. So it'll be a great weekend. We, and it's almost going to be one of those Saturday weather days again. It's supposed to be beautiful, so we couldn't ask for a better day for it. So that's all I've got. Monthly financial budget report.
You all received yours, all want to email those to you. Just a couple of quick things that we've been talking about the last few months of converting over this to the new server. We're in desperate need. The old server is on its last leg. We're having to, just to get our backups every day, we're having to do a lot of baby and hopefully the date is set in November. So we're not exactly sure which date, you know which date they're going to.
The eighth of the tenth is all up there so far. I haven't had a.
So it'll be sometime the eighth of the tenth that we may have to close on afternoon for them because when they move everything over, nobody can be on, on the system. So those, that time we'll have to close and we're looking forward to getting that done. And again, since we did, Kelly did leave us, we are in the process of interviewing. We've actually done resorting, reshuffling in our department and redistributing some of the job duties. So we're trying to make an effort to be more hands-on friendly and user, we're trying to make things more efficient.
Doing a lot of stuff digitally too, not handwritten.
And we're trying to move over to as close to paperless as we can get at this point. So those are ongoing projects we have. Have any, does anybody have any questions? Financial report. I did note that our revenues are starting to rebound. You know, last year they were way down and after the pandemic, they are starting to look up. There was one, I think it was the gas, it's like 30% more revenue over this, this time over last year. Expenditures there are also going up. But we are seeing some rebounding and that's always a good sign for our community.
Always. One thing I'll add is, is, and I would encourage you, I get a copy of it and I know that they would be happy to provide it to you, but I look at all the checks written each week.
I get them, they get them.
And I can't, I can't ask any questions anymore. Sonya, thank you. Because now it's all described, exactly where it was and why it came from there and everything about it. It's fantastic. So with no, any comments or questions from any of the commission, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
You have a second.
Got a couple of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number nine, monthly report from city manager.
Just have a couple of things. I just want to follow up with you to explain that, you know, obviously we all know that Locust Street is closed. The, the next thing we need is a price tag. And our, our Loosen Associates, our engineers and architects are looking at it and they're working with Mike Floyd and a couple other contractors to get prices, but materials aren't available. So getting prices on materials that aren't available has been difficult. And as soon as we get it, we determine what our next step is, you know, is it 50,000 or 500,000, just don't know. So, you know, it's on our radar, just letting you know that we realize the street's closed and it is a hassle. I think I mentioned at the study session that we have a letter of intent on the spec building and that'll be discussed at the county industrial development board on Thursday, whether or not to accept that. And it's full price for what they're asking for, for the, the building and land. And I'll keep you posted on that. We had, I'd like to, whenever we get a positive note about employees, they, we had the gentleman that is the president of National Flight Training that is coming, you'll have a ribbon cutting on Thursday. He sent a note through Latoya who had helped him, saying he wanted to pass on a positive note that he met with two gentlemen from the water department, Brandon and Frog. Frog also has the name of Tristan. These two great guys were professional, kind and knew history of the airport that no one else knew. They knew where the water majors were located. They took the time to answer my questions and guide us to safe solutions as we get our business prepared for opening. Thankful for their time and guidance in the midst of such a busy world that we live in. So that Brandon and Frog, as everybody calls them, are great employees. And then I just want to remind you that we did vote earlier in the year that because November 11th is Veterans Day and it is a holiday, that our study session in November will be on Wednesday night, the 10th. And we will remind you of that, but I'm just letting you know about it now too. And that's all I have.
That's, sounds great. Is there, I mean, us doing that on Wednesday, is there any request to move that up?
The Parks and Rec Commission decided to not have the November meeting because they have so many events coming up. So you're not conflicting with anybody, but we could move it up before 6:00 if you'd rather.
That's all I'm throwing out.
Yeah, our church is at 7:00, so.
I mean, I'm throwing out 5:00 is what I'm throwing out. So if people wanted to attend their services wherever it may be, they can get the opportunity to do that. Is everybody okay with that?
That's fine.
Y'all want to stay later or go home early? I think that's okay.
I'm making motion, move it.
We got, we got motions and seconds up here right now.
We don't need our motion. I don't know where to put it out yet. Next month, same.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah. So, okay, if you don't mind, we might do that. All right, any other questions, Kate? Wastewater liaison and Mount Pleasant gas report.
Okay, wastewater report is that we're moving forward at the end of last month. We did finally get the USDA approval that the cured impact process began last week and is continuing on, you know, knock on wood for weather, that is over there at the trunk line. Our bidding documents for the Rainy Street improvements are, they've approved the project, now they're approving the bidding documents. That, that is what's going on there for Rainy Street. Barge has also responded to a few small questions regarding the large wastewater treatment plant project, but it will be going out for bid. I anticipate these going out for bid this year, 2021, and you'll be awarding them either in December or January. So that's major progress. It's taken a long time to get there, but it's major progress. And then finally, on our Influent Pump Stations, equipment is being manufactured and we're just waiting for the onsite work to begin, which probably in the next couple of months. So there is progress there and there is not a gas system reported this time.
We're going to discuss gas as we get over into our new ordinances and resolutions. So any questions, Kate, on those two? Not hearing any. We'll move to number 11, new business. A, ordinance 2021-1082. This is a first reading. An ordinance declining to amend Title 14 zoning and land use control, chapter two, chapter two zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning a property from neighborhood commercial CN to high-density residential R3.
Cory, is there anything you want to say? And then you, Ms. Granbury might want to say something too.
Yes, so this ordinance is before y'all because the planning commission, or the zoning ordinance requires it to come here, but the applicant no longer is pursuing this change. So take that into.
You see a letter in your packet that he didn't want to pursue it, but once the planning commission had voted on it, it has to go to you.
Right.
Required.
And we just, you know, so we didn't have a loose end that's left here. Y'all can vote whichever way you want.
So will we decline or approve?
It was.
Based on those same reasons?
It's still based on, yes.
All right, so if we use those same reasons and he does refile and we get into the changes and everything that we talked about on Thursday night, will that affect anything or will that be a whole separate incident based on?
So what we were, what we discussed on Thursday and what was proposed by the planning commission to have Will and Robert look at was a change to the zoning text. So instead of rezoning, sorry, just one property, it was changing the rules, looking at changing the rules and the uses of properties within a certain zone. So we don't have that yet, so I can't speak to.
The planning commission felt like they needed some more options, that they felt like some of these parcels or these buildings could be commercial or residential, but they felt the way it's written, and they're correct, they didn't have options. So we're looking into that and that would be something that would be changes that the planning commission has to agree on, that it would come to you to agree on. So I would think, I would think, I don't want to speak for him, but I think the reason that Mr. White backed down is he would not come back unless there were changes made.
I don't think these are connected.
But no.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to mess this up going forward with saying, you know, it wasn't in with the land use area or whatever.
I don't think it will. I understand what you're, you're saying, like, I'm sorry, I'm trying to use my words the right way. But at the planning commission level, what they did is they said because they're only non-conforming uses around there, they didn't want to move forward with just refounding this one property. I'm sorry, I don't know how to make that stop. But what the planning commission is now proposing is to make the text different so that these uses would be allowed.
Yes.
And so we would be changing the overall zoning ordinance instead of just saying this property is more appropriately situated to be used as residential instead of commercial. So I mean, if you were to put in your reason, this property is not, should never be used as residential, that would probably hurt going forward. But I think zoning it, rezoning it based on the current text, it's still these reasons. Like, for instance, nothing has changed efficiently in this area.
That's basically why we did it, because nothing has changed in this area and because we had already denied one, then it would not be favorable to turn around, you know, pass it over to somebody else. So that's why it had to be denied.
So the fourth whereas in the ordinance is with the planning commission, what they ruled upon.
And also we are working on a, a change to the orange card. We're going to be talking with the planning commission probably next month.
You just got everybody to figure out what they are.
The, the.
You know, life.
The items won't be different, but the procedure for going through y'all could be different. We're hoping it'll be very helpful.
Good.
Fun for everyone.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Because that can get confusing. All right, any other discussion?
Did I answer your question, Mr. Harvey?
It did. I'm going to defer to you if you're interested in creating this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
It's been slid in front of you, but there you go.
I know, next time I'll be here 5:00 o'clock. I make a motion that we decline according to the planning commission notes due to the zoning as it is now and proceed in looking at other prospects for the future.
All right, we have a motion? We have a second?
A second.
We've got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. B, ordinance 2021-1083. Again, this is a first reading. An ordinance to amend Title 5, Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, dealing with purchasing, repealing the existing Chapter 6 and adopting a new Chapter 6, updating the purchasing rules, regulations and procedures.
So Mayor and Commissioners, it's just time for us to update our purchasing policy. The state law requires that it's in an ordinance and the purchasing policy kind of runs with our internal controls. And then internal controls will be on the agenda next month. It passes a resolution. We know you've got a bullet point list here from Loretta on some of the things that we're changing. Quick to see what, what changes are compared to our current purchasing policy, but we're pretty sure we'll have some minor changes between first and second reading as well that we're already interested in talking to Cory about, so.
Just the word, I mean, I think we need to probably look at.
The conflict of interest language and things like that.
Makes sense. We'll always be doing updating.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments from the commission? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we pass the first reading to ordinance 2021-1083.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. C, resolution 2021-24, a resolution establishing new bank account for reserve, for rescue funds and declaring representatives of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to have the authority as signatories for that account.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, we have, have opened this account and by you voting on this for the signatures, it'll make it official. So if you're aware that we're getting a million three and they'll, they'll give us half of that fairly quickly.
In 30 days.
We'll have on the agenda in November, a discussion on how to spend this money. We'll be giving you what we feel are priorities and then we want, you know, your input and obviously you're going to vote on how we spend the money. And I've seen that the county has, I think they've gotten $90 million worth of requests and they've got 18 million to spend. We probably have, you know, tons and tons, but we'll take a million three and we'll figure. The reason we haven't had this discussion with you yet is the rules keep changing, you know? We really weren't sure exactly what we could. I'm not sure we're 100% sure today, but we have to have a plan in place in November as we move forward. We had to get into the portal, we had to open this account and we're just making sure we don't miss out on these monies.
Good.
So we just need to get this resolution passed.
I bet you'll see a lottery list from this group. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2021-24.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
We actually have a meeting tomorrow with them to us as a group to look at our capital improvement plan and we'll be prioritizing some stuff to share with you guys. Plenty of priorities.
Good. D, resolution 2021-25, a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale and payment of up to 4.5 million in aggregate principal amount of revenue bonds of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, in making for provision for the operation of the electric system and the collection and disposition of its resumes, revenues. And we have Al here tonight from the power system that's going to say a few words.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, I recommend that, kind of exactly what you said in the study session, minutes in our meeting, or minutes for the official meeting and no problem.
As I mentioned in the study session, this past Wednesday, the Mount Pleasant Power System Board passed a recommending resolution to you all that we issue four and a half million dollars, up to four and a half million dollars in electric revenue bonds. This bond issue will be broken up into two parts. The first part will be refunding our existing long-term debt, which is about 2.3 million, at a coupon rate of about two and three-quarter percent. We will be refunding that or refinancing that at a lower interest rate of, a coupon rate of around two, and that'll save us about $70,000 in present worth value. And the term of that bond issue will not change. It will still be paid in full in 2027. So it's just a money saving thing. The other part of the four and a half million dollars would be establishing a $2 million construction fund for new power transformers that are Mount Joyce substation. These transformers are 1950 vintage, so they're 70-plus years old and they're very expensive. They're about one and a quarter million dollars apiece and we need two of them. By establishing the $2 million in, in new debt, that will allow for future rate payers that these transformers will be serving to pay for those as well or pay part of. And I just want to point out that these will be electric revenue bonds. They're backed by the electric revenues of the Mount Pleasant Power System. They are not backed by taxpayer. And also we are not planning on increasing rates to be able to fund this issue. We can fund it out of our existing revenue stream. And we're, we will be using Oakdale Financial Advisors or Municipal Advisors for the issue. That is the same company that the city uses in Supreme, so they come highly recommended.
And good. The question, with the growth that we expect to come, will these new transformers be enough to handle all of that or will we need to add more in the future?
We are planning for growth. These, these transformers will be on order. These, uh, these transformers will be on an order of about capacity thirty-three percent more than the ones that are out there. The transformers out there now are what we call thirty-three, or thirty MVA base, we're moving to forty MVA base. And we've got two of them, to give you an idea, our system runs about thirty MVA right now. So when you got two of them, you can serve sixty, but if you got two that are forty, you can serve a day.
Awesome.
We should have plenty of room for growth.
Thanks. Any other questions? You have questions for Al?
He did a good job, person, I appreciate him.
Yeah, they do a heck of a job over there. You're very fortunate to have. Al, I think that does it, man, thank you. Entertain a motion.
Move that we accept resolution 2021-25 as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a lot of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E, resolution 2021-26, a resolution adopting the city of Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan.
And mayor commissioners, uh, the Recreation Commission worked on this for quite a while. Bedford's Incorporated any suggested changes, the Recreation Commission approved it, and now it's coming to the city commission to be an official document, and I would imagine we'd probably be updating this every three to five years.
Yeah, I would, I would hope so. Well, it's good work.
Bedford, anything else from you or Ms. Willie or Ms. Jackie?
It's good work. Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept a resolution 2021-26.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
What'd you say?
No.
I'm sorry, because Virginia Park, five years ago, on the city plan, was promised a shelter and the baseball backyard, and they have none of that. So I'm, and I mean, when you do a splash pad, when you're a shelter there, I'm sorry. I got complaints from the community, so I have to say no.
Okay.
Or is it constantly looking for funding sources?
And that's understandable. Okay, we've got, uh, three yeses and one no, correct?
Yes.
Alright. Motion carries. F, resolution 2021-27, a resol, resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to approve a first amendment to agreement for sale and purchase of natural gas with U S T.
Mayor and commissioners, uh, you all should be aware that we entered into our first agreement with them in February of 2016, and in that agreement, it does allow the flexibility in paragraph seventeen where they can, we can purchase future prices for gas. Um, gas is very, uh, difficult to understand, there isn't a rate that you could tell a ratepayer they pay, it's based on how it's traded on the market. Uh, it's going up very quickly, very fast, and they're a huge user of gas, so their desire was to be able to purchase future gas prices. To do that, they needed an addendum to the agreement, even though we, the original agreement is still in place and they're locked into that for five more years. So Cory and I have worked on this, uh, since last week, we're all in agreement with what you have in your packets that was literally, I think, finished at six thirty last night, and it's been signed by Federico and myself, and you are kind of memorializing, uh, this agreement, uh, tonight. Um, actually Federico wanted to come by this evening to thank the city for working with them, and he's flying out and the timing just wasn't gonna work, but I said that I would pass on, that we appreciate them and they, they appreciate us. So, uh, you have this, but the protection for the city is that they deposited six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into our accounts today, they'll have a loan account set up as a protection to the city, and they have to create a, a letter of credit or a financial assurance of a million four, and we think it'll take about six months for them to do that. So trying to keep the city safe, but also give them the ability to do business and, and buy gas at, at the best price they can get it. So Cory, add on to what I've missed.
And the city is getting the gas at the same price that they're, we're selling it to U S T, so.
It's actually, the contracts with us, we're just allowing them to work with Symmetry, our gas provider, to, the term, most common term is to hedge the price.
We're still the pastor, we still get our strike.
I know we talked about this being a locked-in price on, uh, Thursday night, but this, this gonna be locked in for all the gas the city get.
No.
No, it's only them, it's only U S T.
They, and we have a few industrial customers, but they are the biggest and largest that has a contract that their gas was based on the daily trade plus sum.
Okay.
And so now we've moved from the daily trade plus sum to what they're going to lock in for future prices.
Okay.
Uh, we mentioned that the city could come to you at a later date if gas prices continue to go up, but there is a risk involved, and, um.
Huge.
So, not to us right now with these guys, cause we're, we're being protected, but if the city decided to go out and buy gas futures two, three years out, and then gas goes down, we're paying way too much for gas.
You're locked.
That's why we've stayed away from it personally, but, um, so this is just for this client, and right now they're the only one that's on that gas line out there.
Okay.
So.
And it gives them opportunities.
Right.
That's the biggie. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Y'all do have that though, right? It's okay.
Yes. And I want to thank Kate and Cory for all the work they've done on this over the last week. It hadn't been a day, I know it was over the weekend, Dean, so thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
A lot of work went into that. Alright, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept, uh, 2021-27. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright. G, resolution 2021-28, a resolution establishing a new bank account for U S T Incorporated, and declaring representatives of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, do they have the authority as signatories for that account?
Mayor and commissioners, this is what I was referring to, we do already have the six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, Loretta will transfer it into a new account that will strictly just be used for this, and the only time we will go after this money is if they renege on anything that they have made in this agreement. It's basically our protection, otherwise it won't be spent. And in the agreement, it even says it will share our monthly statements with them if they want to see that we're not using any of the money, uh, but we, we do this on a regular basis, so.
Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2021-28.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. H, bid award for gate and fencing at public works slash community services.
Yes, uh, mayor and commissioners, I think we talked about this before, we initially went out and just requested bids from fencing and gate vendors, not knowing what the price was gonna be, and when those prices came in over ten thousand, then that requires us to do a sealed bid, so we had to go back out in the paper with a sealed bid. Loretta opened them Friday, um, and we received two bids, uh, J, J.J. Williams, uh, was twenty-three five, and Murray Fence Company was fifteen five, and we've had good experience, I know Murray Fence Company is very reputable, our recommendation is to go with, uh, Murray Fence Company. Uh, we're trying to kind of protect the public works office and the community service offices from just people, public, just wandering in, so it'll be a, a gate that opens and closes for employees, and there'll be one entrance to get into those two facilities.
I frankly can't get over the price difference.
Yeah, well now when we did the, just the phone call bids, they were, it was like fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand, uh, where the twenty-three thousand we did not get a quote from, and then I don't know how that got so high, but, um.
Man, I'm tickled to death, God, don't misunderstand.
Yeah.
That's a big swing.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about, it was like a big difference in.
Yeah, I agree.
What you're seeing a lot now is contractors are so busy, they're pricing things so high. If you want it, it can cost you this much, um, that might be the situation here, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that firm, I am familiar with Murray Fence.
Any other comments, questions from the commission? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the bidding from Murray Fence Company since it was the lowest and they are qualified as reliable company.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chief, we got anybody signed up tonight? That's a surprise, the change. Being none, uh, Ms. Jackie?
Uh, I've already spoke to Kate about it, but I have, uh, it's a complaint that this actually legit, because, um, Ms. Jackie tried to tap the officer's vehicle, but the sign at the park.
Hardfield.
At Howard Field, it blocks your view when you're trying to pull out in the street and the traffic's coming this way, you really can't see unless you're out in the street, and I don't know if it's just in the SUV because I was, you know, a different SUV now, but I had complaints from like three people before that, and when it happened to me, then I, yeah, I came crying about it, so.
Steve is taking a look at it.
Anyway, I was, uh, yeah, we just kind of turned in a different way or something like that. And the next thing, as far as, it was fantastic, the turnout was great, the music was great, the food was great, they ran out of food, they done an excellent job, the cleanup crew was great, all I can say, everything was excellent, and I was really proud of everybody.
Yeah, it was awesome. And I appreciate everybody sitting up here tonight attending.
And I, I definitely appreciate Brad, what I was finding with them kids all night on them, um, uh, yeah, the bouncy thing, that was a chore.
Oh, man.
But him and Victoria has some pretty good moves, I just need to get the video, I'll come right into y'all, but my phone, I couldn't take off my phone good enough to catch them dancing or whatever, they was doing a pretty good move over there, but anyway, everything was good.
Ms. Riley? Got anything?
No, I'm good.
Eric? Well, I'd just like to, uh, thank everybody for the hard work for this past weekend. Uh, you can tell a lot went into it. Uh, I was excited for the kids to get out and, uh, be able to do, I saw a lot of my kids there, and so, you know, they, they come running, cause they don't think we're real people when they see it now.
Mr. Harvey. Yeah, it's out.
I am not a robot.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, uh, it was a great event, and I appreciate all of your hard work, everything that went into it.
Yeah, it was a lot of folks, not just the city employees, there were a lot of community folks here that put a lot into it too. I know I was here both mornings about seven, seven-thirty, Bedford was already here and there were a lot of others.
And the rain on Friday.
And the rain, so it was great.
Did they judge the barbecue?
They did.
Who wound up winning that?
Both.
Both did.
First place.
Alright, Coach Bull.
And Milton got third.
Milton got, yeah. And they were good, I took some with me. Mm-hmm. Boy, they were good.
I ate all day and all night.
Mayor, you at the beginning of the meeting acknowledged a guest that we have here, but I think it might be worth mentioning, just make sure all the commissioners know the other new local paper that we.
Yeah, Main Street, um.
Murray Main Street.
Murray Main Street, and we appreciate it again, they're gonna start having somebody attend our meetings. Uh, I encourage everybody to sign up because it's free for a year.
Free for a year.
Mount Pleasant was very prominently owned there last week for Big Backyard. Thank you, and it was very positive.
Comes in your mailbox every Wednesday.
Yeah, so I would encourage, if you're not already getting it, to sign up for, and yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
We have, uh, Maurice came to the middle school, uh, last week. I have, uh, come out of coaching retirement, uh, no, Chief Hay, I'm not eating nachos on the sidewalk, um, but, yeah.
So that was your coach?
Yeah, when I was coaching basketball. Uh, uh, well, you get hungry while you're coaching.
Well, I don't doubt that.
Oh, but it, I'm coaching an esports team, uh, so we're doing Rocket League, and, uh, they came out and, uh, are gonna do a story about it, so it's, uh, we're the first esports team in Mary County.
Wow.
Interesting.
Good for the, good for the school, good for the team.
So anything esports?
Esports, so, uh, most people call it, you know, gaming, you know, like we're playing our Xboxes, Playstations, but it's like, we have a team, we practice, and then we're playing, we're kids from the whole school, you know, instead of just playing online against somebody. So, we're playing Rocket League, which, uh, a soccer game in the car, driving a car, hitting a huge soccer ball.
Exactly like that, I've seen it.
Backhanded, oh.
I'm happy to see something go down.
You're taking our stuff.
I probably didn't shred for it, gotta be nice.
And a child goes off to the record for the way that they opened it up.
Oh, man.
Bombing the kid, because it was so many kids up there and they were so excited, and to, uh, also to our mayor who's gonna hang their paintings up here for a year, that has just super influenced them.
Yep.
And I mean, and it's, it's good to see them doing good things, kids wanna do good things in the community.
House and staff that are at work.
Yeah, I mean, oh, man, you mean a child really done this and I can't do a straight line, I mean, yeah, it was, it was, uh, it was fantastic.
Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. If they move, second?
Second.
Favor? Alright, we out of here. Thanks for everybody for attending.
I feel like we answered that question about the. But I think the better way to say it is that when they're doing these.